Well, my guess is he probably didn't.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. We're calling the Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for April 23, 2024 to order. It is 6:39. Councilor Merritt is not here, as we know, and he has some personal issues. And Council Parker is expected to be late. She is at a TVCCA meeting representing the council. Onto Calendar and Communications, Council Board of Lahn.
Thank you. First, I just want to say to everyone that was involved with the Earth Day event at the library. I know the gentleman from the Diddy Bag who was very active in that, and all the different vendors that were there. It was a great turnout and stayed pretty busy even through the rain. So it was great to have the restaurant Shipwright's Daughter there and many other things from kombucha to plants, to everything. So it was just nicely attended, and it was such a great time. I also just want to remind folks about the Expo that's happening on April 28. I think that's Sunday, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. So anyone that's experiencing any form of addictions or any concerns with housing, there's going to be different people there that can help hopefully and assist you with that. I've received communications regarding SB Butler, COLPA, Board of Education's budget. Let's see. What else do I have on my list? And I think those are my only things I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Pacina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to pass.
Thank you. Council Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Groton Subvets Memorial Service in honor of the USS Thresher. On April 10, 1963, the Thresher went down off Cape Cod. It was built here in Groton, affecting a lot of families in our area. 129 men were lost. And just to remember their families and all of those who gave their life for us. It also led to SubSafe at EB. So that is the one thing that came out of this that was good. I also attended the Earth Day Expo at Groton Public Library. It was a wonderful event. A lot of people were there and great vendors. So thank you to everybody who attended that and everybody who made that happen. This Thursday, April 25, from 5:45 to 7:15, is the Groton Community Conversation again. It is the third, third, um, thank you, the third one. There will be a discussion on housing needs in Groton. It is at the Community Baptist Church at 950 Gold Star Highway. Again, the Human Services Expo is on Sunday, the 28th, from 6:00 to 9:00 at Thrive 55. There's an Arbor Day celebration, April 26, at 10:00 a.m. at 102 Newtown Road. And I also received multiple communications regarding the budget and the school properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the Community Conversation is on April 25 at 5:45. Is it at? Do you know the location? Because I have something different written down.
The Baptist Church.
It is the Baptist Church. It's not the Chelsea.
I've got the flyer. Yes.
What?
I've got the flyer up right now. It is.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also received many of the same emails and communications that other councilors received. I also did, went to the Earth Day Expo and agree with the fellow councilors. It was a fantastic event. Very well turned out. There were also lots of people from the town, police from the town, who had booths on different topics, talking about MS4 and the lid, and there was conservation, planning, lots of different. It was a great opportunity to talk to people and get information. Very well attended by everybody. And having gone to last year's and this year's, there was a noticeable increase and a lot of energy going on there. So that was a great event. That's what I have. Thank you.
Council McBride.
Thank you. Numerous communication on the budget and other matters, as all the other councilors have received as well. On the 10th, I did attend a National Zoning webinar, receive some ideas and recommendations on how to solve some of the housing issues. So I'll be looking more into that. On the 11th, I attended the CCM Legislative Committee hearing, Committee Forum. Numerous bills being reviewed in the legislature for some upcoming thoughts. I'll just mention a couple. One of them was potential, the way they assess taxes. They're looking to include depreciation in there. So if that passes, it would reduce some taxing on residents. Some discussion on the ECS funding regarding the Finance Reform Bill. The bill maintains the pace accelerated ECS phase, and it holds harmless municipalities that are overfunded based upon the ECS formula, which should help us out as well. Also, there were some discussions on a new bill regarding incentives for transit-oriented development, which would provide planning grants for municipal transit-oriented development projects, which is something we can look into later. Also, some discussion on TIF district revenues, where towns and cities would be able to allocate revenues through their TIF district to renovate affordable housing, and also direct these revenues towards the renewal of deed-restricted affordable housing, which many are set to expire. So that was the highlights of some things that are of some importance. Also, on the 17th, I attended the Connecticut Offshore Wind Forum and received some updates from Commissioner Dyke, Dykes, and some others regarding the bargaining wind industry that's happening in Southeast Connecticut, and the partnerships with Connecticut, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts. So that's everything for my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Guyaski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been seeing and hearing a lot of things about the budget, and I want to share my thoughts. My first budget as a council was difficult. We faced, as a council, an 8.8% tax increase or make cuts to a budget. Over time, my colleagues and I got to work, and we got that increase down to roughly a 4% or 1 mil increase. Town operations is down 0.9%, and we had just north of $2 million in cuts. I voted for most, but not all. A few cuts I didn't think were worth it, and other councilors did the same. Every vote I made, and I am assuming my councilors made, not speaking to them, was a vote of conscience. I was recused on the Board of Ed budget due to a conflict of interest I had, but my colleagues voted for a 1.91% decrease case. Many in our community are upset with the decision, and I am too, to an extent. However, I realized that my colleagues faced a predicament. Have a large tax, fully fund and have a larger tax increase in rough economic times, or make a cut. Out of the request, roughly one-fourth of the ask was cut, with nurses and roughly north of one-third with nurses. They still voted for a 4.5% increase for the schools without nurses and 6% win. Either way, that's the largest investment in our children in the past two years by 1.5%. While some will say the council in the past hasn't invested enough in education, and the 7.91% ask is reasonable, and they should have fully funded. It's a fair debate that I will not take part on based on my refusal, but it's there. But one thing I'm certain, the suggestion to reopen other items to fund the schools is not practical, as the budget, as I mentioned, is already, the town budget is already down 0.9%. It's misleading, and I don't want citizens who love our schools like I do to get their hopes up. The RTM with the two-thirds vote has the power to restore and make more town cuts. If they find out how to do it, God bless them. The most troubling thing is that my colleague, who was publicly advocating for this to happen, only voted for roughly half of the $2 million in cuts made by the council, which would be a 6.6% tax increase. My colleagues on the council and I made the decisions that we had to and what we were comfortable with, no matter how we voted, because we are seeing many people evicted out of their homes, and to protect taxpayers is of importance to everyone in the community. As the mayor stated last week, we made the town cuts to give as much to our children as possible and responsibly. I wish the next round of decision-makers all the best in crafting a budget that's right for the town, and to remember, it is an honor to do the people's work.
Thank you. So I would like to take a moment of silence for the passing of our Chair of the Sustainability and Resiliency Committee, Mr. Zell Stevers, who had passed away last week, and have a moment. Thank you. Also, I was going to mention the Community Conversation. Thank you, Council Rusk. I was, also, on April 26, at 10:00 a.m., there'll be a tree planting at Thrive 55 for celebration of Arbor Day. Also going to mention the eviction Expo on April 28. Thank you, Council Board of Lahn. And then on May 1, at 6:30 at Thrive 55, is the RTM budget, where they begin their deliberations. And that is the evening where citizens may comment on the budget. So I would encourage citizens to get out to that meeting and make your voices heard. I also, also, I've been in touch with the Chair of the Board of Ed and have watched their meetings. And the Board of Ed Finance Director has resigned from his position yesterday. The Superintendent had made an announcement at her Board of Ed meeting yesterday. And they are trying to put in place some actions they will be taking to fill the position very quickly so that the department can be up and running smoothly. I've received numerous communications from residents, and many of them have been about the budget. And I believe that there's been a lot of miscommunications, misinformation out in the public. So there's been a lot of correcting of information. I also watched and heard the Board of Ed meeting, and I've been hearing that the blame has been coming onto the Town Council, that their health reserves in the past, that it is, they've taken direction from the Town Council to reduce their healthcare reserves. And I want to be clear so that people in our community fully understand that our council cannot tell the Board of Ed how to spend their money. We set a number. They are responsible on how they spend their money. We cannot dictate to them exactly how to spend their money. So I just take it as an affront to say that it's the Town Council, and pointing fingers at the Town Council, that it's our fault that we played some kind of role in telling them to reduce their health savings, and that this is a decision that even in my memory, they came to us with their budget and said that they had cut it. And even if some councilors had suggested it, we, as a council, did not vote on it. We did not make a decision together to recommend that to the Board of Ed. So I just want to make that very clear. This is a decision that was on them on whether they should or should not use their reserves from their health savings account. Thank you. We are moving on to approval of minutes, 2024.
About the date on the Arbor Day event, what time and location?
The Arbor Day event is April 26, at 10:00 a.m. at Thrive 55.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes. Council Guyaski, would you like to move that? That's right on, basically on page one is the written.
Motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Special Meeting Minutes of March 28, 2024, and the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of April 9, 2024. So moved.
Second. Board of Lahn.
Moved by Guyaski, seconded by Board of Lahn. Does anybody have any questions or notate any changes they would like made? Okay, don't see any hands. We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? That is seven to zero to zero. Onto new business, 2024-111-1, additional early voting locations. That is on page 17. And Council McBride, would you like to make that motion?
Yes. Here with me one second. Make a motion to recommend a resolution setting a public hearing on June 4, 2024, to determine if an additional voting location is needed for the primary election.
Second, Guyaski.
Moved by McBride, seconded by Guyaski. All right. Would you like to come up and? Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you like to introduce yourself and give us a little synopsis?
Sure. Kristin Menditti, Register of Voters for the Town of Groton. We just had a primary. Now, it's not exactly the busiest primary that we've had. Not something that we can actually judge how many people came in, because it was somewhat decided before the date. This, just as a background, the Secretary of the State incorporated a law that was created. It took effect April 1, 2024, and it's for early voting. We have one location set up that is in our building where our office is. We did just use our office this time, but we have a room next door we can use. We did a bunch of advertising as much as we could in the newspapers, and we put out a big sign. And a lot of people said that they saw the sign, and that's how they knew to vote. A little bit extra, people that came in said that they saw the sign and they came in to vote. Other people said that they wanted to try it because they knew that it was a new law. There were a lot of steps that they had to go through, but they didn't seem to mind that. I'm here this evening because we need to decide if we want to have another location, if it's necessary to have another early voting location or more than one in the town. My opinion on this is that we still don't know how many people are actually going to come out and vote if we have a real primary. So, you know, cost is an expense we need to worry about. I did not budget for a second location because it was up in the air. And the only thing is the date of your public hearing is kind of past the deadline. So they need to know a few months in advance of an election to, in order to set up the system that we use to house all of the information. So June 2 might be a little late for this August primary, because they told us that they wanted the information by the end of May. So just a thought, I know it's not that bad if you guys made a decision that night, but then I couldn't promise that we could get the CVRS system put in wherever we decide to go by that time. Just because when we moved from one location to the other, it took them almost six months to put it in. I know it won't take that long because, you know, the state is on it and they need it. It's different than us just choosing to move, but we do need to give them as much time as possible in order to get that installed for us.
Thank you. Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Register. That's great. Can you, so this is, this is just for a public hearing, but we currently have one additional location, and your, the public hearing is for a second.
Location.
Location. How much did it cost to put in the first location?
It was $7,500 to run the early voting location. Actually, give me one second. Yeah. Just double checking because I get for a second there was, seemed like.
So $7,500 to run the first one. So if we did a second one, anticipate it to be the same amount?
Yes, because that's just for the workers.
But do we also have to put in a line?
We do have to put in a line. The state will pay for that, but they will not pay for the Groton employees that are going to be doing anything. So their time would have to, I guess, be incorporated as far as that goes.
And for them to, the six-month thing that you mentioned, that was for the state to get around to putting it in?
Yes. We were working with RIT in Groton, and they were great. And they kept having to get back and forth with the state to set it up. Then we were about to move, and it wasn't hooked up even though the state said it was. So they have to actually go through, I think it's AT&amp;T, as well as the state people, as well as RIT. I know that it will not take that long. It should take less than two months, because the state is on it, and they've got extra people that they've hired to do this for this project.
So you're anticipating it'll be shorter. If we approve this in June, then they can July, so they have to get it by August, I guess.
Yeah.
Even though this wasn't a big primary, because it's, for us, it didn't really work, do you have a sense of how many people actually did come out?
We had 130 people come out total in the four days. That was, we had about 4% total voting, not just in early voting, but in everything. So it was just a really low turnout. So my guess is some people wanted to see it for the first time. I imagine a lot of people hadn't figured out that we have it yet. So there is a possibility that it could be busy. My thoughts on that are that we don't know to spend that extra money until we know for sure. The only problem is, is to set up for the November election. If we decide we want to have one in November, we need to know before the primary happens in August.
Will we need a second hearing? Would we need another hearing for the November election? Like this, like this hearing is for the August primary. We also need another hearing. It will have to happen.
You don't need to have the public hearing every time, but I do have to bring it to you every time.
Every time.
You guys have to decide whether you want another one or not.
Okay. So you're just going to, we're going to wait to see what the hearing is and see what people say and go from there?
Yes. And my thoughts on that, too, is even if they get it in too late, once we have it in, then there won't be this time constriction to get it done. But I don't know how much it will cost the town side. I can talk to IT and ask them and get that for the hearing so that we know all the facts before.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So I had read an article in the paper about how the state had given communities about $10,000, a little over $10,000, because this was our first time setting up for early voting. But they, the potential is for them not to fund this in future years and to leave it all on all the towns to take care of this themselves. Are you hearing the same thing?
Yes, that is, that is true. At least for this budget year, there has been no money put forth for the August or the November election from the state. The Secretary of State has asked for it, but was denied.
And so I would assume, and just assuming because we don't know, we don't have a crystal ball, but come November, early voting, more people may show up for that, you would think.
Yes.
Because it's a regular presidential election and.
Just for knowledge, we usually have about 80% turnout for a presidential election, where we had 4% for this presidential primary. So.
And 80%, do you know approximately what that number equates to?
We have about 22,000 registered voters.
Okay.
I'd have to do that on my calculator. Give me a second. Sorry. Be about 5,500. No, that's the minus. Sorry.
Wait a minute, how many?
Give me 16,000.
About 16,000?
About 16,000. Sorry about that.
And how many of those do you think do early voting now, like with just sending in their paperwork?
There's no special paperwork for early voting.
Or absentee? I'm sorry, whatever, the one where they can mail it in and they have to get the.
Yep, absentee.
Absentee.
Yeah, that usually, in this case, for this year, I think we had about the same amount of absentees that we had for the number of early voting.
Well, in a typical election?
In a typical, well, it's hard, because the last time we had a presidential election, it was during COVID, and we had about 12,000 absentee voters out of the 22 that we had registered. So that was extremely high. If we go back to 16, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I know it was a lot less than 50%. It was probably more like 20% in a presidential voting primary, but like I can also get that exact number for the public hearing.
And so 20% usually show, like usually do absentee. And then we would have to assume that a certain percentage of that would might do, or maybe even more, might do in-person early voting. It's very hard to gauge. It's extremely hard to gauge.
Yes, there is no way to tell until it happens.
Yeah, it would have been nice if they picked an off-year to start this.
Definitely.
It's a very difficult decision here. Of course, I would like to, you know, have two locations, but also do we man two locations for potentially, like you said, this time, there was only 130 people that showed up. So it's very, because maybe they didn't know, maybe it hasn't been advertised, you know, like they didn't see the advertisement or they didn't see the signs and just don't know. So it's very hard and difficult decision. So I'm going to allow some of my other fellow councilors to chime in if they'd like. Anybody else? Pacina? Council Pacina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you have a second site in mind if we choose to go with a second site?
Well, the first thing that pops into my head would be a site in the city. And that would probably be, make most sense to be the Groton Municipal Building. And then in Mystic, in that area, I don't have a set site, but we could always use like Cutler, Thames River.
Mystic River.
Mystic River, thank you. I'm just.
Yeah, it's always Cutler, right?
Yeah. The only problem with having things in a school location are just the dangers to the kids, having the public come in when the school is open. And this would be seven days. So we'd have to search for another location. I thought about the firehouse that's on the top of the hill with the blinking light. And when I called them, I mean, they really don't have enough parking. So if we were to have presidential early voting there, it would probably be more of a detriment to them than, and not help us because of the parking situation there. So I'd have to find another location if we wanted to have one in Mystic or in that side of town.
So you weren't thinking of keeping the current location in your office or the room next door as the second, as one of the two locations?
Yes, this, the one in our office will always be because that's a central location. It's also easier for us because it's in our office. We didn't have to get new CVRS, which is our, our program, installed because it was already there.
All right. So you, so we're talking about possibly three locations or just, where's the number two coming from?
See, I was just trying to, to figure out and I want to make it fair for the whole town in all of the subdivisions. So not knowing what would be more of a turnout versus people not showing up in one location over the other. So I would probably be looking maybe at the, the public hearing or, you know, if we can get the poll going that we were, we were talking about doing to ask people, you know, where they're located and where they would like to go or along those lines. But my, my first thought was always the city municipal building because then we would have one in the city and one in the town. But I want to make it fair, so. We'd have to decide if we were going to have two. I don't think that there, normally, there probably wouldn't be enough of a turnout to even need a second one in, in the off-years. But for presidential, we may, we may want that.
So, so if we chose that second site at, at the municipal building, let's say, could we have it all wired up and we don't have to use it? It'll just be all set to go when we want to use it? And the state will pay for that, wiring it up?
The, the state will pay for the installation with AT&amp;T and the, whatever the state needs to do on that end, but they do not pay for our Groton men who actually, or not men, but workers who actually have to go in and install the wires themselves. Because they actually, between the DPW department and the IT department, they're the ones that set up and, and installed the CVRS system for us.
Okay. So if, if we hold off on doing second site and, and hold off on bringing up a second site, are we looking at a couple of years down the line, the state not wanting to do this, not wanting to cover that cost?
That's definitely a possibility. Probably a probability.
So strike while the iron's hot and we don't necessarily need to use it, but we'll have it?
Yes.
And we won't have had paid for it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Boardman?
Thanks. So the second site would be, as it was just stated, fully funded by the state with, with there's some costs that would be funded for it?
They would fund the installation of the, the programming. We would still have to pay full for all of the workers and anything that we would need to man that site.
So my big thing is about accessibility and I think early voting, one of the reasons, if you actually get to the heart of why it's, you know, becoming something that we're doing, is that, you know, the average person doesn't have that one night off, you know, people work rotating shifts and they might work at a casino in the evening and on a Tuesday night, you know, voting, they're sleeping during the day and it's just hard to get there. So having this anytime open accessibility allows a person with a non-traditional schedule to be able to walk into a place and get the job done. So that's the goal. So when I look at the goal, I look at accessibility. Also, it also helps people who are working, I mean, we're in economy where people are working two and three jobs and people don't have vehicles. So it's very important that they're on the bus route, so the places that you spoke about are. And again, folks who rely on rides, you know, may not be able to get a ride on that one day on election, may need a ride another day. Or they're not feeling well that day. It could be in a hospital, I mean, or in a nursing home and, you know, just not even thinking about voting at that moment, so. Or they're planning for a surgery. And so it's nice because the absentee ballot has a no question thing right now where if you're not feeling well, you can get one post-COVID since, you know, those things have changed. But I do think if a percent of this is going to be covered by the state, I think it is time to act now. One of the things I saw in other states that had early voting, like New York, my aunt is big about volunteering at the polling station, she's in her 70s, and they had one fail. And they couldn't get it up and running for weeks. And they had, thank God, that district now, New York being a much bigger area, they rely on that extra machine. So when I think about that, it's a no-brainer to me because if we have them both wired and ready, if one happens to mess up or fail, we quickly can enact another. I would hate to have only one thing going and have major failures and then not be in compliance. So I don't know, I just wanted to see what your thoughts on that were.
I, I agree. There have been times like they, they have not done, the state has not done stress tests since the early voting started. Like we used to test the system, everybody would, they would say, please be in your office and do work in the program at this time for an hour or whatever, so we can see what, how the, the system will handle it. They have not done that for early voting. And I know that some of the towns, I mean, we do have multiple machines in each location. And we did this time have, at one point, one of our machines did not work. It was not the state's fault, it was the computer's fault. IT was over within minutes and, and helped us get it back up and running. But we did still have the other two and we had three set up in the other room because we weren't sure how busy it was going to be.
Yeah, I mean, I think I like the accessibility of having one ready to go and wired just in case we need to fire it off and if we don't, great. But we also have to think outside the box, maybe, I mean, I don't know, a major storm comes in and the location you have has major water damage and everything, there's a loss. We have a backup site. Like, so I just think if the state's going to pay for a percent of it, it makes sense to have one wired and ready to go. And at any point you can pick up and relocate if you had to temporarily. Or if you realize you needed it in both, you could have both. Where that second site should be, I'm not 100%. I do like the idea of having it on the city side. There's a lot more folks over there that may, you know, have trouble getting to areas. Also, it just rottens 40,000 people and it's very spread out. So where that middle line is, I think you found the middle. Now it's like, what end do you put the other one? So that, that's tough, but I do like having a backup ready to go. And then if we don't need it, that's great. So what would the cost be then to get one up and running? That's my last question. Our cost out of pocket.
I do not know the cost because I don't know how many man-hours it would take for Groton employee, IT people, DPW people to assist with it. I can ask the IT department because they did set us up only a couple of years ago, so maybe they will know.
Just to, just to note that if it was in the city, it probably wouldn't be our staff. We'd have to work with the city if it was in the municipal building?
That's a good point.
Oh yeah, good point. Even though it's for a town function? Okay. Awesome. So I could talk to the city then? They may not go for it.
Counselor Gajewski?
Before I start, I just want to let everybody know that the clock is having some technical difficulties and Mr. Greeley has been playing with it. So thank you, Register Vendetti, for coming this evening. How many workers work at an early voting location?
Well, this particular time, we had seven workers working. The way that the system is set up is that there are multiple steps that they have to go through. They don't have to do an awful lot of work, the voter itself, but they do have to go to different locations. So they come in, they have to check in, there's a checker sheet like you see at your polling place, they have to be checked off the sheet, then they have to be checked into the system and issued an envelope for their ballot, which has a sticker on it with their name and all their vital information that's needed. Then they go and they fill out the ballot and fill out the envelope and then they bring it back to us so that we can check it back in. Normally that would just be a, a quick scan, but our scanner was not working, so we just manually put the number in, took maybe an extra second, it wasn't much. Then they have to go and put it into the ballot box. So with all of those people, the registrar is mandatory, a moderator is mandatory, and then we had another five people assisting with the process because we didn't know how busy it was going to be. As it got closer, we realized it probably wasn't going to be as busy, but we had already hired the people, they'd already been trained, so we figured what if? So we let it happen. If it's for the presidential in November, we would probably hire more people than the seven, because I have a feeling it would be much busier.
And if you were to do multiple locations, is it possible to have less staff or no?
I think seven would be the minimum.
Okay.
Maybe if we have multiple locations, we would just hire the seven for the multiple locations and then see how it goes. If one site's not as busy as the other, we could always send extra people over there.
Got it. And then you decide the other location, correct?
Yes.
And then are hours of open, like are the hours of the early voting, those are, are those regulated by the state or, and what are those hours?
Okay, so for the seven days, five of those days would be 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That's what they were this past primary. And then for the Tuesday and Thursday, they would be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then for November, just so you know, 14 days, it wouldn't be the two weeks of Tuesday and Thursday, it's just the Tuesday and Thursday closest to the election would be 8 to 8. All the rest of the days, the 12 days would be 10 to 6.
Okay. Thank you for providing me with that information. I just kind of wanted to have an idea, just on flexibly. That's it. Offer me, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, this motion that we put on the floor is a recommend a resolution for setting a public hearing for June 4th, and this is for the August primary. Is that, is that what we put on the floor? But the deadline, if we read here, is May 24th. So the public hearing is after the deadline that we need to give to the state. So the public hearing doesn't really do any good if it's, we're going to miss the deadline. Is that correct?
Correct.
So why are we having a public hearing?
We're having the public hearing now.
But we're, it's not applying to the thing we're having the public hearing on?
If you don't mind, I think our last discussion was to try and get the public input to see what they had to say about it, regardless if it was in time or not. I believe that's what the conversation was on the council.
Is that correct? So this public hearing isn't for this primary, it's just a general public hearing?
Point of information?
Your point of information.
And also to help determine if we're going to have multiple stations for the presidential. So this public hearing would kind of get a feel of the community, is my understanding.
But do we need to have another public hearing for the presidential election also?
The public hearing is not mandatory. Coming to you, you guys have the decision whether you want to have a public hearing or whether you just want to make a decision. You could actually tonight decide that we want to get it hooked up and ready to go, whether we use it or not. We can wait until the public hearing to determine if there's enough interest that you think we need it.
Okay. So, so we could change this and just make it, that way you could go for the August primary. Otherwise, the public hearing would just apply to the November primary, November election.
Whatever you would like to do.
Okay. No, I just was trying to be clear why we're having a public hearing after the primary when we're, we're going to miss the date, so. Okay. Thank you.
And can you just clarify, who's the August, who's in the August primary?
It's a state and federal legislative primary. So the members of Congress, the senators for the federal government, as well as any state senators or any state congress that would need to be elected if their term is up. My understanding, though, from the Secretary of the State, is that we may not need to have a primary in August at all. So we won't know because the primary petitions are just coming out and the, the final information on who's going to be on the ballot doesn't come out until the end of May. So we won't know until later whether we're actually going to have an August election.
Thank you. Counselor Boardman?
So for me, I think it makes sense to hook it up. I mean, I wish we had numbers tonight to kind of know what that cost would be. I think there is also a gray area if we do hook it up in the city, since it's like town who's paying, so I don't know if it should be a second site on the town side if we're running it from the town side. So that's another kind of gray area that I can't answer tonight. But I do think a second facility should be ready to go. I mean, that to me is the most proactive, and then if we decide to use it or not. I think the public hearing is a great option, even though it's past the primary, I think it helps for the general election in November. And it just gives us a pulse so that people understand what's going on. Maybe someone's going to come out and say, hey, I think this is working wonderful or not working. I just think it gives a person the opportunity. So even though it's past the primary, it's still getting feedback for the November election and future early voting. So I think it just gives a place and a spot for people to bring forth the idea. But I think we, I'm in favor of moving forward, let's get it hooked up. But again, I guess the town manager, how much did we spend last time?
I was not involved with that.
Yeah. So we don't know. So that's the thing. I mean, are we talking $1,000? Are we talking 500? I mean?
I don't think it's actually cost out of your pocket. It's time of your workers. So it would be whatever they cost per hour to get the other system hooked up.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I, I just think it makes sense to get it up and running. So that would be me and hold the public hearing and move forward. Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Just a question to follow back up on Counselor Jones's point. Can we get more information before we make a decision to do this and then decide on May 21st, which is three days before the May 24th deadline? In order to do the, you know, if you get the financial information you find out from IT, if there's more information, can the council still decide on the 21st to do this? Because it sounds like just two different things. There's deciding to do it and then having the public hearing. And it sounds like we don't have enough data to, to determine to do it, or at least in my opinion, we don't have enough data in terms of the cost and the ramifications that we don't know. Maybe by May 21st we'll know if there's going to be a primary or not. So.
I can put, put the information out to collect that data and as soon as I have it, I can let you guys know that I have it and then you can put it up at your next council meeting maybe.
Mr. Burt?
Just to point out, the 21st is not a regular cow night, it'd be the 14th.
Thank you. So I, I mean, I'm leaning more in favor of it, but I'd like to know some hard numbers on what the financial ramifications are before making that decision. And I'm, I'm in favor of the public hearing, but I think there's two, that's, there's two different situations that we're discussing now. So that's all my comments.
Okay.
Point of information?
Your question?
I can agree with Counselor McBride. My question is, can we just set forward, like the public hearing in general, right? So if we decide to fund it or not, can we tonight decide just to get the public hearing, you know, set and then do the financial part on a separate motion?
Yeah, they can be separate motions. But I, I would think that if tonight, this is the agenda item, the item on our agenda, if we're going to add the second thing in, we'd have to probably vote to suspend the rules because it's not an agenda item.
All right. I, I'll make the motion to suspend the rules then and, which item is in the package exactly? So.
Am I correct?
Who are we suspending?
To add another motion to have?
Well, I mean, we don't need a motion just to have her bring information back for the 14th. It's only if you're going to actually take it, real action on that, so.
Are you looking to?
I thought you wanted the numbers first, though.
Yeah, the numbers first, that's what I said. I can agree with that. I would like, yeah. I would like, yeah, okay, I would like to just move forward the vote to, say we're going to have a public hearing, to generate people understanding, you know, now ahead of time, so we can see what the spike in the interest is. And then come back with the numbers. So I would just like to vote on that and then do the other one separate.
Okay.
That's what I meant. So vote on the motion that's here to have a public hearing. And then with the numbers another night.
All right, so I would like to vote on this motion to have a public hearing. I understand it's after the date. Will they be setting another date time for the early voting for November? Will there be another deadline that you will have to make, that we will have a decision to make prior to that, to set it up and set up a location?
Yes, I believe that that is in June. They're spreading them out because we didn't have a lot of information the first time, so they gave us, you know, the shortest possible and hired the most people to install. Then this one, they're giving us a little bit more because we just got done with the first one, so they're, they're giving us a little more. But in the future, I think it's always going to be that we have to find out in June whether we're going to have one in November.
All right, so if we, bless you, if we do set a public hearing for June 4th and then make a decision right after that, it would set us up for the presidential election in November?
Correct.
So even if we miss the May deadline, we can hit the next one, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. All right, I don't see any other attempt at a motion, and I'm not, before we move on, I want to ask if somebody wants to make a consensus for something. Do we want to have this on our agenda prior to the May 24th deadline? Or are we okay for the June 4th hearing and then making a decision after that, set up for the November election? So let's just sort of take a consensus on where they feel on that, because then that will determine how we set up the future agenda. Counsel Boardland, which do you prefer?
I mean, I'm trying to understand, can you say it one more time, please?
So the deadline's on here on May 24th, so we'd have to have an agenda item before May 24th to decide if we're going to have a second election, second location, or we wait till after the public hearing on June 4th, decide on the second location, and then the registrar will be able to do that, put that in play before the November election. Because there'll be, there'll be another deadline after the May one.
Yeah, I'm fine with the public hearing being on the 4th and having the information, because it's kind of, I mean, we're not going to make it for the primary anyway.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, Gina?
I'm okay with the motion as it sits on the floor.
And then the, do you want it to come back to our agenda before May 24th to make a deadline for that deadline, or are you good with the next deadline that is in June?
I'm good with the next deadline.
Okay.
I'm good with June 4th and waiting till the presidential election to put this in.
Thank you.
Same.
Same.
I'd like some financial numbers to make a decision on the May 14th.
Okay.
June 4th.
Okay. June 4th is the hearing?
Yeah, yeah, but after, yeah.
For the presidential election.
And we could get numbers after that.
Okay, so sort of have a consensus here. I also agree that we could do the hearing on the 4th and be set up for the presidential election and figure that one out. And so let's take a vote on the motion on the floor to recommend the resolution setting a public hearing for June 4th.
Point of information?
Yes.
So we are going to be getting the numbers to beforehand, or are we just voting to go ahead and install, I'm a little confused. Are we waiting for the numbers to decide if we're going to install?
We are going to have a public hearing on the 4th and then decide after June 4th whether we want to set up, put it on the agenda after June 4th to have a discussion for the presidential election, if we want to have a second location.
So that we will have some numbers by then?
I would assume so, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
So point of information, so we're now making the decision not to have a second voting for the potential primary, correct?
The primary in August, correct. We're going to decide it later, and that would affect the presidential election in November.
Okay.
Whether we have two locations for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we good? Okay, so we're going to vote on the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that passes seven to zero to zero. Thank you, and good luck with all this.
Thank you.
Up next is 2024-378, the 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act. Counsel Jones, would you like to move that?
Item 2024-378, 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act. The motion to recommend a resolution to schedule a public hearing for the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program of June 4th, 2024, so moved.
Second, Boardland?
Moved by Jones, seconded by Boardland. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourself and give us a little synopsis of what we're going to, ready to hear, discuss?
Very good, thank you. My name is Paige Brock, the Economic and Community Development Manager, here tonight to talk about the Neighborhood Assistance Act. This, I'd like to provide a little bit of an overview on this, just for the benefit of the Cow and also the public. This is an annual program that the state conducts, so it's a state program, including their application, and they're the entity that does the approvals ultimately. It's the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services that initiates, manages, and approves the programs, the program. They've released their state program in early March to the municipalities. Basically, the role of municipalities, including the Town of Groton, is that we are somewhat of a facilitator or distributor of the state information to eligible applicants. The state applications are required to pass through our municipal review. Also, the municipalities are required to conduct a public hearing, and it's the municipalities that submit directly to the Department of Revenue Services the applications that have been forwarded. That deadline for submittal is July 1st. So again, the state issued their application in early March, and the ultimate deadline to be submitted is July 1st. So it's a relatively pretty quick turnaround, given that these projects have to be designed, close to shovel-ready, so to speak, in order for an applicant to submit a specific request. There is no direct funding from either the state of Connecticut to the applicant or the Town of Groton. Sometimes there's some misunderstanding on that front. The town does not have grant monies that provide, that are provided to an applicant, nor does the state provide direct funding to the applicant either. Basically, the way it works is it's a public-private partnership, so to speak, where the business community is the entity that provides the direct funding to the qualified applicant. The business community in turn is provided their state tax credit. So it involves the business community, basically not-for-profit and state and municipal review. The maximum that a business, a qualifying business can receive is $150,000 in tax benefit. That is also the same amount, it's a maximum award that any NAA applicant can receive as well. There are two different tiers with this program. The most commonly used one deals with energy efficiency. Most of the applicants, including those that we've received this year, fall into that category, so it's 100% credit. In theory, if an applicant applied for the max $150,000 and a business was found to partner with them, there would be a $150,000 credit to that business. That's the first tier. The second tier is basically a 60% credit. That would be for non-energy efficiency type programs. There's a full description in the referral as to that second category and what types of projects might qualify. We don't receive as many of those, the 60%, it's mainly the 100%. The Town of Groton's community development webpage describes the state program with links to the state's Department of Revenue Services program link. Also, the Town of Groton annually distributes the state's information by way of email. We have a list of those that have expressed interest in this program, and we will submit, provide to them notification with the state's application as soon as we receive it from the state. We've historically fared pretty well in submitting these applications to the state. The majority of them are accepted and approved. Just to provide some context, since 2018, we have submitted and received approval for over $2.4 million in projects. The challenge, though, I have to say, the challenge is not getting the state to necessarily approve, but find, having the applicants find the appropriate business partners. They have to directly communicate with a partner and make a pitch that it's a great project, they're a great organization, this project is ready to go, and convince a qualified business entity who might be interested in this tax credit program to partner with that entity. That is the challenge, and that's the same challenge for every municipality in the state. So it is common for there to be a large number of applications that are submitted and approved by the state, but only a fraction of those are actually funded because there's a deficiency in the number of businesses that are participating. We have recognized that. What we have attempted to do is make direct contact with businesses, qualifying businesses, letters been sent out explaining the program, asking if they might be interested, so that our applicants, when they gain approval, hopefully, we can help facilitate some role in trying to play matchmaker. Specific to this year, we have three submittals. The Thames Valley Council for Community Action, TVCCA. Energy Conservation deals with windows, it's a $64,000 request. The second one from the Groton Public Schools, Energy Conservation, deals with lighting and equipment in the auditorium, that's $141,000 request. And the third, Riverfront Children's Center Daycare Facility, again, energy conservation, window replacement, and that budget is $65,000.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Brock. So I just, I know I've asked this question before, and I, every time this grant comes up, I get confused again. So just to kind of walk through, so basically, you have an organization, we have three of them here, who have needs, and then we have companies that want to participate in the, in the program, and they get matched up. So let's just say, like, the first one's for $64,000. That company gets a tax credit for $64,000 on their state taxes, is that right?
Yes.
Not their Groton taxes, but their state taxes?
Correct.
And then, they then, if everybody gets qualified, they then give that $64,000 to the organization, is that...
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
And when they file their taxes, they just deduct the $64,000 from the state? So instead of the money going to the state, it goes to the, to the organization?
That's correct.
So it's, there's no, there's no money, there's no pool of money that's being distributed, and there's nobody getting or receiving, it's the same money, it's just changing, the state agrees to take $64,000 less in tax money.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Although I don't pretend to be an accountant, so that's the general idea, yes.
So instead of the money going to the state, so the $64,000 going to the state, it goes to the organization, and the state says, this is a worthy project, and they take $64,000 less in their taxes.
Yes.
That's, that's basically how the, the program works.
That's right.
So, okay, that's, I don't have any, I'm not, everything's fine, I'm just trying to understand that the money, where the money goes, and...
Yeah, I think it's important for people to understand that, because when, typically the state deals with grant programming, and you apply and the state gives you the money, that, that's not how this program works.
So it seems like it would be a great deal for companies that want to participate in their community to be able to give money to places. Does the company have to be in the Town of Groton?
No.
It could be anywhere in the...
Statewide.
Anywhere in the state?
Yes.
It just, this is a worthy project.
Right, but typically, typically, a local business would, from a public relations standpoint, like to partner with a community-based program.
Can it be more than one company? Can several companies partner together?
I actually don't know the answer to that question. I would think it's possible, but I'm not positive.
Or they could partially fund a project, or...
Maybe.
Maybe, okay. All right, all right, thank you. Hi.
I just wanted to point out Counsel Parker arrived at 7:32.
Thank you, I have that written down, I was going to mention that. Thank you. Counsel Boardland?
Thanks, I think this is great. All three of these are obviously wonderful to... Who is partnering with, when does that come out? So you said there's someone that partners with each one of these, is that how I'm understanding it? So how do we know who's partnering with these businesses? Is that something that will come out later, or we never know, or how does that work?
It hap, that happens after the state approves, so it's post-approval, but the state, the state does provide documentation, like, they'll, they'll put out a pretty sizable report, the 2023 Report Approved Business Contributions for the Neighborhood Assistance Act, so we'll know at some point, but it's not, it's not really on the front end of the process. However, applicants who understand the program well, will start that early.
Yeah. No, I think it's great, and all of these have some direct impact on children, so it's, you know, definitely fits the picture here of what they're looking for, and I think it's great. So between, you know, TVCCA and Riverfront and the school, the lighting for the school, is that for the stage?
I actually don't know if it's for the stage, the description's in the application, it's kind of a general description, it just mentions the auditorium with equipment and lighting.
I can't say for certain, but it's the exact amount of the CIP for that.
Yeah, that's why I was making sure.
$141,000.
So yeah, I just, so for me, that's a no-brainer, because the arts, you know, at the school, so it's definitely, that system up there is very old. So anyway, I think these are all wonderful, and it's kind of nicely spread out from the city side to the town side with young children and, you know, helping the high school, so I hope this is successful. It's definitely three wonderful programs that are needed, so, thank you.
Counsel Rusk?
Thank you. Thank you for all of the information. I also support all of these programs. My only question is, TVCCA recently got $2 million from the state. Are these windows that they still need to replace if they're getting that $2 million grant?
I think that term "window replacement" is used by two of our applicants, and I don't know that it's really replacement, because it's a new building, right?
Not every building's being torn down there, though.
Okay, that's my question. Is, I just didn't know if this was written prior to the grant being received. I know that they received a very substantial grant from the state, so, okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McBride?
Yes, thank you. I'm in full support of this, I just had a question. On the detailed application, it looks like the total proposed expenditures were $65,000, so I'm not sure if, if this should be $65,000, or maybe I'm just misreading something? On page three of five... On page three of five in the...
Excuse me, which project?
So it would be on page three of their application.
Right, I think on page one, they requested 64, and on page three, it says 65.
So I'm not sure if we should make a motion to amend that to 65?
We can get clarification at the time of your vote, if that works at the...
At the town council. We can clarify, fix that at the town council.
In favor, thank you.
Okay. Good catch.
Finance.
Finance.
You're the money guy.
All right, so, do you have businesses, has Groton reached out to the businesses, asking if they'd like to participate in this program? Are we, like, we're really working on that? Have they, have any businesses truly stepped up and helped? Because I know some of them have dropped off this list because, did they find their funding a partner?
This is actually the first year that we've tried to really focus on the businesses because, after looking at the 2023 report from the state and seeing statewide, all of the projects that were approved, and there's a lion's share that did not get a backer, we immediately turned this year to the business community. So I, I don't have an answer as to whether or not it's successful, but this is the first year we've sent out direct letters to businesses that we think meet the criteria as established by the state. They have to be big enough and, and meet a certain corporate structure to actually qualify. So we, we reached out and, and we'll see, but it's been, it was just within the past month that we sent the letter out.
All right, I think that's wonderful because it's, it seems to be very hard to find the backer, is the issue, and some of these have sat there, and like you said, many of them don't find the backer, they don't find the partnership. So no, I'm absolutely in favor of this. I, I always thought this was a good program. I just don't know how for a business, maybe I should talk to somebody in finances, but giving out, like, just say $65,000 and then getting the tax break of $65,000, it's sort of a break even, I don't know exactly how that would impact on taxes, a business, if it's just an even, if it flushes out even. So, but that's for another day, but I actually think this is a wonderful program, and I, thank you. And I hope, I really hope you can find some backers, that would be great.
Counselor Bordalyn?
Is there a financial threshold of the business that they have to be at, or some type, that criteria, is it pretty steep, like, a size or something that, in order to be able to be a backer?
To qualify?
Yeah.
Yes, I don't know that threshold, but they have to meet a certain corporate structure. I don't know that off the top of my head, but they have to be, you know, a, a small business is not really going to qualify, they have to be, you know, a medium to large-sized. Groton Utilities does a lot for the community, including participating, but we, we think there should be others, but just to give you a flavor for size.
So like General Dynamics, Dominion?
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, definitely.
Electric Boat?
Oh, yeah.
Pfizer?
Yep.
That's where we're talking, like, kind of.
Yeah, but possibly they could be smaller than that, too.
A little bit smaller, okay. Will there be a post online saying that we're seeking sponsors with maybe a little blurb of, like, what the benefit of it is and, because it's something I could share, you know, I share, and I have, you know, everyone here has different connections with people, and sometimes you have friends who work for these companies that are willing to say, you know what, I'll bring this initiative forward to my head person at my company.
I think we can share the letter and the description with the town manager and can provide it to the council and go from there. You know, certainly, we're looking for help, anything people could do to use their network.
Perfect. Even if it was a, a small, like, write-up on the economic development or town page saying, you know, you know, there's this, these are the three projects that Groton's seeking, and we're looking for sponsorships, and this is the benefit. If you want to be a, a person who wants a partner, please contact Paige Bronk, John Reiner, or town manager, however that, just one small, so the letter would be great, but just one little square kind of hit that will lead someone to you guys would be helpful to kind of fan out there, if possible.
Okay.
Thank you. Just let me know when it's up, and I'll share.
All right. Great. So we'll take a vote on 2024-378, the 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions. That passes eight, zero to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is the 2024-258-1 Retiree Pension COLA, July 1st, 2024. Counselor Rusk, would you like to?
I believe there are three motions on the floor.
Oh, that's right, I'm so sorry, I was saying it before I even looked at my notes. All right, so, let's refresh. So this is an item that has been postponed. Welcome. We had postponed this. So the original motion on the floor was the alternative number two. That was a 5% COLA increase for active retiree beneficiaries that have been retired for five or more years in the town non-union supervisor groups and telecommunicated groups as of July 1st, 2024, and approved up to 5% COLA increase for active retirees beneficiaries, and no waiting period for the police, USW steel workers, and police non-union groups, 2% annual cost, and are listed here in our packet. So 5% with the option of two is on the board, and then we had, that was moved by Franco, seconded by Pacino. And then, the first amended motion was a 2%, moved by McBride, seconded by Bordalyn. And then, the second amended motion was 3%, all of these are option two, moved by McBride, seconded by Bordalyn. There was a question as to, the first amended motion was made by Counselor McBride for 2%, seconded by Bordalyn, and it was noted that Counselor Bordalyn may have withdrawn her support on that one, but we weren't sure if Counselor McBride had pulled it. My memory serves me was that I thought we had left it on because you couldn't pull something that was below.
I think that's probably also, I think you're correct, that's probably why it stopped before it does in the minutes.
Right, because I, my memory serves me, and I could be wrong, was that we left it because I don't think you could go back and withdraw support from a motion that was underneath an amendment, so. So I believe we postponed so we could get some further information, and much of that is in our packet this evening, so we can open that up for discussion.
Can she present any of the new information, just so folks hear it?
Sure. Would you like to present the new information?
Hello again, Arneisha Green, Director of HR Risk Management. So most of this write-up are the first half, and I should say is a review, and then the second half is the information that was requested. So from an attachment perspective, the original actuary information is attached, both with the five-year waiting period and without. And then, the next page is the original chart, and I added some information due to the question about a 20-year review, for lack of a better word. And that is the annual cost increase over 20 years. So really, what would be spent, which as you can see, the total of the annual cost increase over 20 years is actually greater than the additional accrued liability. And in talking to the actuary, it helped me to think about it from a loan perspective, that really you are ending up spending more than with the annual cost increases because you're spreading it out over a longer period of time, and I would call it financing if you're thinking about a home, from a home finance perspective. So that was a new addition to that chart. And then, the following page is what was asked for, for social security increases, as well as Town of Groton increases, what the groups noted. And then, the page after that is a combination of the count of the retirees that are collecting, as well as the monthly min and max by group. And then, the last bit, which is four or five pages, I believe, is a listing for each group of the actual amount of monthly, as requested.
Counselor Jones is going to go first.
I had my actuary daughter here to explain all this.
Me, too.
Can you, when was the last time we gave a COLA?
The last, sorry, that would be on page 42. So that would be 2022. So the last time we had this conversation here, and it would have been effective 7/1/22 in the same way that the next one, if you choose to do so, will be effective 7/1/24. So the last few times, it's been every other year, every two years.
So do you sort of anticipate 2026, we'll probably do it again, and 2028?
We will, I'm certain, have this conversation every two years because the unions are allowed every other year to prompt the conversation. So then, I would bring it forth, and it's part of the documentation that, that happens.
So my, my question is, I'm just going to pick a random one here, just because, I'm just going to pick a random one. It's not, so if I just sort of picked one of these, 3%, and it's $155,000, it's the annual cost, so I'm just on page 41, and it just says, the annual cost is an additional $155,000 to our pension payments for that year. In 2026, let's just say we did the same thing again.
Mm-hmm.
Outside of inflation, would it just be another $155,000 that would increase?
That figure might not be 155 for the 3% at that time because the actuary does a snapshot of what's going on then. So it would be the next actuary report, which could have an up or down of how much we're funded, how was the market done, so really, it's dependent...
But it's a number somewhere in that range. So I guess my question is...
If we were to assume things remained similar to how they've been.
This number, the 155, kind of goes through, and we have it going out over 20 years to $3 million. In two years, we do another percentage, and that travels along.
On top of this.
On top of this.
Yes.
So these things just keep, so...
Yeah, yep.
The, the, the cost, so at some point, if you sort of move your way down the line, the, the $3 million becomes, a $6 million becomes a $9 million.
It could, this is, we're talking assumptions. So you projecting in two years that a 3% would be worth 155 and an overall cost of $3 million assumes that everything is the same. We might do far better in a couple of years, or far worse, so...
I think more of my question is that the, that the increases just got to pile up on each other. It's not the amount, it's just that they continue to sort of build, one builds on the other, builds on the other.
Yeah, you had used, I think, a layer cake comment last time. So it's an additional cost. So this will be baked in the next time that the next two-year actuary report is done, this is all accounted for, be, you know, if you decide to do it.
It's the base, becomes the new base, and we have another layer that just keeps going. And the ones that we've had preceding this are...
They're in there somewhere.
They're all running along now underneath, so...
You know, six years ago, what 20 years out looked like might be different than two years ago, what 20 years look like. So it's very hard to isolate and say, okay, this is from this year, this is from this year, because each time it's looked at in totality and based on the circumstances at that time. So it can fluctuate a little bit.
And they just go forever.
Well, one day, maybe, we'll be 100%.
And just to mention actuaries, so this is really only useful for three or four years?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Agreed.
It's more this, the question, they just kind of, they kind of layer up, and they just keep going.
Right.
No?
I don't see it as layering up. I, I don't think a new, I, I think, you don't give like a nine, like, if you added four years together and you had a 9%, a new person coming in doesn't get nine.
Layering up, I interpret the question to be from a cost perspective, so not about what a new person is getting, but what is the town incurring as a liability?
I'm thinking it from the town point of view, that it's just, it just keeps piling up. Right? Okay. I'm just trying to understand how they work.
Increases.
It increases, it just keeps increasing. Okay, all right, that's my, that's my question.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Regarding the liability, the 81 or 80.3 liability that we have now, do we know what we have in assets that's covering that 80.3 million? I know, because I think you're fully flung in the aid deck, from what I've heard, but I'm just wondering, what does the town have in assets?
As of the last report, you want to know the split?
Just recent, last six months, a year, whatever, just, I mean, is it 20 million we have, is it 60 million, is it? Because...
Let me see if I'm consulting the right thing. There's market assets and actuarial assets. So if you remember, they do the smoothing. So market, as of 7/1/23, which would have been our last report, was $137.7 million. And unfunded accrued was $38.9 million, for a 78.7 funded ratio.
Okay, so 38 million were underfunded, okay.
38.9, yep.
I guess I'll just say, I, I'm, I'm in support of giving wage growth adjustments, but I just feel like we, over the last couple of weeks, have gone through hell dealing with this budget. And for me, I recall, we went through this a few weeks ago, I proposed the motion of two or three because I didn't think I had any support at all, so that's why I went to three. But I'm not in favor of anything above 2%. I think 2% is a fair wage growth, as is indicative of the last 17 years. It's been two, it's been three, it's been two, it's been one, it's been two and a half, so I think that's fair. I think to burn in future taxpayers with $3 million or $5 million of costs is, is not the right time to do that, so I can't support that. I also don't believe a social security wage index is comparable to a wage index of a pension because pensions are treated somewhat differently, they're not funded the same way social security is, in terms of the employer and the employee match, so I don't think it's a fair comparison using a social security COLA. And I think that's all my comments, I just don't think it's the appropriate time to do that, but I would support a 2% increase. Thank you.
Counselor Bordalyn?
Thank you. I mean, I think it's really important that, you know, we, it is a tough year, we, we can say that forever, like, every year's a tough year, isn't it? Every year, I do my budget stuff. But it's also important that, you know, we, we fund pensions, you know, it's important. A lot of people in this country don't even have pensions. I mean, there's people right now that are struggling that will never get a pension. Not saying the folks that have it didn't, you know, earn it, that, that's great, and I can understand what Counselor McBride is saying. I also have concerns that it has not been funded for many years, that it's just sat I can't take responsibility for that, as I wasn't here. I don't think it's fiscally responsible to play catch-up all in one year on the taxpayer to say, well, all these other councils that were here constantly didn't do it, and now let's throw a, you know, 10% increase or something, I don't know, whatever. I don't know where that number is, I definitely think some raise has to be there. Where, where I feel comfortable, I definitely want them, you know, to have a raise. But it also is important that folks here, you know, stated, you know, we're running a tight budget, and there are certain items this year that we did not increase or fully fund because of the tight year. So where this number is going to fall, I feel like a 3% is pretty fair. I was looking back over the years of my own raises and things like that, and looking at the rates that other pensions in the state are raising, and they're anywhere from 1.12 to 2, to 3. 5 is a great number. I just think what, you know, I can commit to as a counselor is that we should be making sure every year there's not a flat, like, that we're doing something, some percent raise every year. So that's kind of where I'm at. It is, you know, if we want to attract employees, we have to, you know, if that's the expectation is that they'll have a pension, then we, we have to fund the pension, so. And these pensions go on... And these pensions go on for however long, and that's the obligation. So I don't know where that percent this year is, and I'll listen to see where other counselors feel it should be. You know, I just think we made cuts to a lot of other areas, and, you know, how do we find the most important area that we're going to fully, you know, give a 5, but then only give this, you know, give one area a 3, another a 2, another a 5? I mean, I, it is a tough decision. But what I can commit to is that I feel that this should come before us all the time, and it should be a gradual process. And why it sat stagnant for so long is beyond me. So that's all I have to say for now, because I'm going to run out of time, but I'll take my second turn in a little bit.
All right. So I'm going to go through some of the things I already went through at our last meeting. So I'm on page 42, and I do think you can go by the cost of living. And it is pertinent because even government employees go by this. Other towns give a percentage every single year. Some of them have a policy that it is routinely looked at. It is based on, you know, the cost of living increases, like even by the, even by what social security goes by. And they have a policy in place so that when this happens, that it is just there with maybe even a maximum that they don't go over. And I would suggest that maybe this council takes this up as something that we tackle or even create a committee to tackle, because we were very successful in other things, such as fire district pilot money. So if we could come up with something like that, that it wouldn't be so stressful and hard when this does come up, and it would be based on, you know, some numbers here that you could compare them to. But I would like to notate that between 2016 and 17, you combined those years, it was a 2.3% increase. We gave about a 2. 18 to 19, it was a 4.4% average cost of living increase for social security. Groton gave 2. 2020 to 21, it was about a 7.2% increase. Groton gave about 1. Then in 22 to 23, it is 11.9% increase. Last increase Groton gave was 2.5. So when I, this makes me stand by 5. You have retirees, and on page 43, it gives you the breakdown of who those retirees, what groups they're in, and there are 225 of them in the group, it says here, counting retirees. There is a minimum amount that somebody gets, and there is a maximum. And it states it on there. These are people that work for our community, and we've seen the retirees. Some of them put in 30 years, 35 years, more or less. And we celebrate them, and then we send them off onto retirement and wish them well. And now it is our time, as a council, to take care of them, because as we have discussed, many of these people do not, did not contribute into social security, and this is their pension. This is it. They don't get an increase from social security. They don't get anything from social security, so they are dependent on some of their increases from the town of Groton. So as I stated at the last meeting, it's not that I wouldn't support a 2 or a 3, but I'll vote against them because I'm going to hold out for a 5% increase. I have a quick question. This will not go into this 2025 budget, correct?
Let's see, it's effective 7-1-24. So any payments that are made, I believe, would be out of the pension fund, and then it would be reflected in our next actuarial report.
And that would go into the 2026 budget, is that correct, Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Point of information?
Your question?
Of the seven unions that we have here, or the seven groups we have here, which have, which receive social security?
To my knowledge, the employee groups that don't pay into social security would be police-based, us sworn, I should say.
They're the only ones that don't?
Correct.
All the rest of them receive social security?
Well, they pay into it, so... You need to do minimums, though, to earn social security, so I can't speak to their collection, but their status of paying into it, yes.
So it's just the police that don't get it?
That don't pay into it with us.
That would be 55 retirees.
So the rest of these people get it?
Point of information?
Your question?
Oh, then Tom Inger explained why the, it wouldn't affect into 2026. Just want to understand that.
So when we're looking at the, and I may lean on you for this one, too. When we're looking at the actuarial reports, it's usually a year behind. So the one that we have currently is 7-1-23, even though we're in FY '24. So it's, I always look at it as a year behind, because they have to have a full, complete fiscal year when they're doing the whole evaluation, and we don't get it until the next fiscal year, which we use for planning for the budget. So the one we have now is 7-1-23. We received it, let's say, this past winter, and then it's going to be for 7-1-25 ADEC, if I'm not mistaken. So '23, we're in '24, and it's used for '25.
Can I add to that point of clarification? Because I understand your point about the present value and actual determination, but the actual cash that is going to be more money in '25 has to come out of the '25 budget somewhere.
That was the pension fund, I would say.
Yeah, the pension trust, pension fund, trust fund, the budget.
The 7-1-25, or 7-1-24.
Does it affect the actual budget? It doesn't change the ADEC or how much we have to pay in it until the next year?
No, I understand ADEC, but if we're coming up with an extra 100, 200, 300,000 dollars we have to pay in fiscal '25, that money has to go into, has to come from next year's budget.
It would be added...
It's not going to do the ADEC. It's more cash is going out the door.
Add to the pension fund balance.
Right, it doesn't flow to the general...
The balance. Feel free to update me if I missed anything.
You've got to get the money somewhere.
What's that?
You still need to get the money somewhere.
Added to the pension funds.
It's not budgeted.
The budgeted ADEC, and that doesn't change for you.
Right. But we have like a balance, like we're talking about the balance that we just talked about. That's where it would be coming out of.
Okay, so I think...
So the pension payments would actually be coming out of the separate pension fund, which has that $137 million balance. So even if there is an increase for the cost of living, it, the adjustment for whatever that would be in the next valuation would be accounted for as of the July 1, 2024 valuation. But yes, you're right, the payments in fiscal '25 would be increased by the COLA, but it wouldn't be affecting the general fund portion that's being...
I think we're talking the same. I just want to make sure it's cash going out the door for next year. Okay, thank you. Any clarification?
Counselor Gajewski?
Counselor Jones still has the floor.
Oh, do you?
No, just a point of information. Or I can take my turn.
Well, I've never, because Counselor Bordelain did a point of information, Counselor McBride took a point of information, Counselor Jones...
I thought he was...
...was at 237 now.
I was going to take a second anyways, I could just...
You still have your first term, based on...
No, because he spoke first.
Spoke first.
Then McBride, then Bordelain, then Franco.
Oh, so this is his second term?
Counselor Gajewski, would you like to speak?
I just want to make sure I'm not...
You can have the floor.
I don't want to take Counselor Jones.
I got this.
Okay.
You have the floor.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So do, so of the, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Of the two, 1, 2, 3, 4, out of the five groups that pay into social security, they also receive social security in addition to their pension, correct?
Okay. Why I hesitate to say yes, they collect, I can't speculate on anyone's personal collection. Usually with social security, there are minimums that you have to reach a threshold. My assumption is if you have a longer-term career with us, then yes, you've met the minimums per social security administration to collect social security, or maybe other jobs you've had outside of us. I can tell you they contribute here, and if they work with us long enough, then it's my assumption that they will get social security. Their social security collection doesn't affect their pension calculation and what they're getting from us. That's based off of the pension document and the percentages that you get per each year that you work. So theoretically, sure, you could have worked here long enough to collect social security, and then you can have a pension with us. If there's any offsets from social security or maximum amounts, you know, you work when you retire, things like that, I'm not a SS expert on that.
Okay. And then, um, and then comparison, how does our pension system compare to social security for the general average citizen? Do you have, is it better, is it worse?
That is too broad a question for me to even tackle, to compare the two.
Okay. And then on page 47, there's a police numbered $6,846.85. It is italicized, and I was wondering why it was italicized.
That may be just formatting I got from a report. I didn't change anything in particular.
Okay, so it's just formatting?
Mm-hmm.
Mine is not italicized.
Mine is.
Yeah, it is. There's just one...
So is mine.
Yeah, it is. It's just hard to tell, but I think it's just formatting for me, copy and pasting. There's no notations extra on them.
Gotcha.
Are your eyes okay, Madam Franco?
I see two that are italicized.
Oh, all right.
Two numbers.
Oh, yeah, right. Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And then, I'm torn. Actually, if I remember, could you refresh my memory? I remember in our previous council packet, the unions had sent requests. What were, what percentage increase were their request?
They were consistent with a 5% ask.
So they were consistent with a 5% ask, okay. I'm torn, because as it's been stated previously by my colleagues, I mean, we went through hell of a budget. But this would be coming out of the pension fund, it wouldn't be coming out of the general fund.
Correct.
So it really wouldn't be affecting the average taxpayer, then?
Depends how you look at it. Eventually, that fund needs to have an ADEC contributed to it, but that's only a portion to keep it in good standing and continue to grow the percentage. So that's subjective, I think.
But the worker...
But the immediate result, yes, it's not, as Counselor McBride asks, is not from the budgeted money that's directly tied to the taxes.
But the current workers are contributing into that fund, correct?
Yeah, they all have a percentage that they contribute.
Okay. I'm torn. I could see myself voting in favor of the 3, the 2, and the 5. Based on the information, I'm okay with an increase, but I am concerned about overall health of the pension fund, but, so I'm going to leave it at that.
Are you all set?
Yep.
Counselor Rusk?
Thank you. I'm definitely in support of an increase. My concern is that we don't do this every year. My understanding, my memory, if it's serving me correctly, was the last municipality that I was a counselor, and we did this every year. So I agree that I think this is something that we need to make a referral for and look at how we're going to move forward on this, because we can't go back in time, but there were so many years that people didn't get anything. So I'm not sure if I'm at a 3% or a 5%, but I definitely believe that people need to get COLA increases. We, I'm just torn at where we're at, so, but I would like to see this done regularly, and then if it's a 1% or 2% increase every year, it's a little bit easier to manage.
I would just point out, as the pension documents are written, it's every other year. Any change to that is through negotiations in a very separate venue than this.
And did that start, the number, in 2016? Is that why that started, then?
That would have been up to the councils. I don't know why there was a stop or a start. I can't speak to prior to the decision-making, but...
No, my question is, was that in the, in the budget negotiations in 2016? I know that was before your time, I'm sorry.
The pension documents, some of them are older, and they do have the every other year in there. So I think it's been like that for a while, the way that it's written.
Okay, thank you.
Tom Inger, did you want to...
No, I was, you know, that's my understanding exactly. In '18, a couple of the retirees reached out to the council, and they said, let's make this a priority to try to fund it. And so they said, let's make sure we take this up every other year.
I agree. That's my memory as well, that we heard that it was not taken care of in previous years, and it was chosen to be a priority of the council.
Thank you.
Counselor Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Son of a gun. I just lost it. Good, skip me.
No. You might want to take a moment.
Oh, goodness gracious. It was right there, too. Oh, if we do an increase of whatever the percentage is, would that necessitate or facilitate an increase in what the current employees are putting into their, into the fund?
No, that's also a finite number as well.
Okay.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just looked up, the average social security payment is $1,700 a month. So just going back a little bit to the point of, the point of, the question that I asked. So we have seven of these, five, is it six or five have social security payments that we're assuming if they're eligible for social security? There's just one, there's just the police. And the police non-union?
I believe it would be police non-union as well.
So it's two of them, then? So, so five of them would be receiving regular social security COLAs, and, and two of them wouldn't? Is that, if they're eligible for social security?
From us. I don't know about any other jobs or anything outside. I can only speak to their careers with us.
But just in the normal, as if they just were going through, they would, so, okay. All right, I think I'm, I'm not sure what's on the floor here, but I'm sort of in favor of the 3% also. Sort of where I'm sort of falling into place, along with some others, so, all right, thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green, for the question. Do you have a question?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. My question is, are those police non-union, there's a distinction, is there the non-union employees, the officer, patrol officers are part of the union, right?
Patrol officers are part of the police union.
No, I said, I'm talking about the military, the captain, lieutenant, lieutenant, are they in the non-union or are they represented in the...
Captains would be non-union, lieutenants would be union. And so captain and above would be non-union.
Okay, so some of those, are the not, you have other non-union, police non-union, is that the secretaries, or are they other, I should say, secretaries?
No, if there was, there's admins that are in the union and admins that are outside the union. So that's why I said sworn before, just to clarify, if, let's say there's somebody that...
I'm sorry, I just, I hadn't heard that, sorry, so...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is that, the police non-union only support officers that are paying, not the other office admin, I'll put it that way.
Right. Any admin folks would either be union or non-union, but not police non-union.
So I'm leaning towards the three with my fellow counselors, and I'll see how everything turns out. turns out. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, again, not sure why previous councils didn't fund it or flat-funded it. That's definitely a concern. I see that it's every other year, so for me, it's like, if you look at the five, then it's almost like you're giving 2%, 2.5% for each year in retrospect. It's just that you're lumping it all in one, but you're doing it over two. Is that correct?
I think that's a way that you could look at it.
So if you did the three, you're looking at 1.5%? And the two, you're looking at 1% a year?
I mean, you could slice it either way. It's just over a two-year period, however you want to divide it.
So when looking at this, you're not really looking at this as a one-year raise, you're looking at over two, because we don't do it every year. I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
It is only awarded, yes.
So to me, so to me, the five, then, is really giving a 2.5%. That's how I see it. It's just that it's being lumped into one. I don't know. I did some research on this, and I hear people say, you know, non-union, union, who's getting Social Security, who's not? I mean, it's hard, hard to tell. I mean, some people retire at 39 if they started a job at 20, 18, depending on when they started. They might even be of Social Security age yet, so hard to say if they're getting Social Security. So they could be working still full-time and drawing on their pension. That's one of the beautiful things of locking in early, you know? I know a lot of military people who have done it, a lot of my family, retire at 38, and now are in their 40s, you know, gonna draw a second pension before even collecting Social Security, so. I don't know. It's tough. It's definitely tough to see. I definitely am not for the 2%. I definitely can say that. I think 1% per year is not enough. But I don't think this really changes if we do it every year or not. I think we, I think for me, it's looking at it, if we do it every two years, what is that turning out to be as a yearly increase? In my mind, that's just how I'm rationalizing it in my head. So if an employer gave you 2% one year and 3% the next, you know, it's the same as doing five, really. Again, I do think it's important to fund pensions. I can understand where some people have concerns about amounts. And I think those are my only notes. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker, do you, do you have your hand up again?
No.
Okay, there's some, something going on there electronically. Thank you. All right, so right before we vote, I'm gonna just say that if you add up the last four years, from 2020 to 2023, that's four years' worth. The cost of living increase has been 19.1%. I think that is astronomical for people in our community. And we, as people that live here, we know what it's like to go to the grocery store, and our insurance increasing, and heating, and everything else in life has increased. And versus Social Security, they said it went up by 19.1. Groton has given our COLA increase in that period of time at 3.2. So it's not like this is ancient history, it's even just recent history, that there have been huge increases in what's going on in our environment with the cost of living. And I just don't think to give something every two years and to say, "We'll give you an increase of three," which equals out to 1.5, when just this, you know, the past two years was 11.9% increase. I mean, we've all experienced it. Inflation is insane. And I understand protecting the town funds, boy, do I understand that, and taking care of the taxpayer. But at, with $137.7 million in our fund, with $38 million unfunded, which means our ratio is 78.7 as a funding ratio, can you tell me in comparison, like, not even comparison, is that a healthy fund? I think it's not bad. Mr. Burt, is that a healthy fund?
It's pretty good. I think we are here in 80 is kind of where a lot of places are getting to be at, so it's good. It's, you know, I'd like you to hit 80, but it's good.
Of course you would. I would, I would, too.
But at the same time, we, you know, it's affected because we're changing our expected return rate of interest.
I don't even know if the state retirement plan is at 80.
Different story.
Or 70. So I think we are doing absolutely fabulous with funding our health, our, not health insurance account, but our COLA account there, retirement account. So I think we've been very responsible, and I know in past years, I've even asked the town manager, you know, when there was excess funds, should we put those into that account? And I have been told we're doing very well in there. I think we can use these funds somewhere else. So I just can't see giving three. I just can't. That's 1.5 per year, when the cost of living has been astronomical. I will, trust me, I will vote against 2 and 3, and if they pass, good. But if they fail, I'm holding, I am holding out for five, because I am just saying, we only do this once every two years, and what has happened in the past four years has been 19%, and we've given 3.5. And it's just, I can't, I cannot vote for a 3 or a 2. I just can't.
Can I just remind the group that when you put something forward, the alternatives say approve up to, I'll just need, whatever the outcome is, the finite percentage, but the other thing for consideration this year, and it's just for this year, it would have to be, you'd have to tell us what you want to do in two years again, is, does everybody need to wait five years, or do you only want the groups where the language says so to wait for five years? So just to remember, there's two distinctions.
That's a motion on the floor.
The motion on the floor, all of them are selecting option two.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right. All right, let's see how many times we've talked there.
I had it up before me.
All right. Counselor McBride.
Thanks. I just, a couple of questions. What's the ADAC at now annually? I know we just went through the budget process, but I can't recall.
What we contribute.
What we contribute annually. Do we, do we have that?
It'll just be one second.
And just a point, a couple of points of clarification is, Counselor Gieske asked about coming out of the general fund. This would come out of the general fund in '26 onward, because we have to fund the ADAC, so I just want to make sure.
ADAC, so a portion, yeah.
A portion of it will need to be funded, so it does affect...
But the immediate payments are from the separate fund.
Got it. But the general fund will increase as a result of any motion, anything we approve here.
Assuming whatever the ADAC recommendation is, which is dependent on performance and other variables that are looked at at that time.
Right. And then another point, I heard numerous times that the previous councils haven't funded this, and I just want to clarify that. The package I have shows a 2% increase in '16, a 2% increase in '18, a 1% increase in '20, a 2.5% increase in '22. So although you can debate whether or not those are proper, we, I don't think we should say they didn't fund, because it looks to me like for the past five iterations, the councils previously have provided them every year. So there was a period of time, well, yeah, every two years, per the agreement of two years. So there was a period of time before that, that the council didn't fund, but the past 10 years, they've funded every other year. So I just want to make that point.
So the ADAC contribution for fiscal '25 would be a total of $6,497,900. But the town portion of that is $4,853,400. The other portions are Board of Ed and for the Aquanic Bridge.
Fire Department.
Okay, so if we're funding 4.8 on a $38 million underfunded liability, if we go to five, and we increase five more million, everything else staying the same, that's gonna go up to 43, which means our ADAC, if we're funding 4.8 of 38, we've, just high level, 4.8 of 38 is 12%. We then would have to fund 12% of the 5 million, just to stay the same with the ADAC. Assuming everything else stays the same, that would be a $630,000 increase if we do And the other concern I kind of have is a 5% figure. If I was an employee, I would maybe take that a little harsh, because you're giving retirees 5% when they're not getting 5, the current employees aren't getting 5%.
It's every two years.
I understand that, but it's still giving them 5% this year. So those are my points. I just think it's financially not the best thing to do at this time. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any more questions, no more hands. So we're gonna vote on the first, the second amended motion on the floor is at 3% with option two. Moved by McBride, seconded by Borlon. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so I'm, Counselor Borlon, I mean, Counselor Parker's online. I'm gonna have to take a roll call vote. Counselor Borlon.
For 3%?
Yeah.
No.
Counselor Pacina.
No for 3%.
Counselor Rusk.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor McBride.
Yes.
Counselor Gieske.
Yes.
Counselor Parker.
Yes.
I am a no. That passes five to three to zero.
May we take a five-minute recess?
That sounds good. Yes, we'll take a, we never take five minutes. We're gonna take a 10-minute recess.
So that's...
It ain't happening.
It's this one?
Not this one.
Not this one.
.................................
Pension ever.
Start young, just start young. Okay, we're back from recess, and I can't see the time, so I think it's 9:53. 8:53. 8:53? 8:53. Okay, so we're moving on to 5D, which is the 2024-FYE 2024 fourth quarter transfers. All right, so on these, I believe we can just read the motions. And when we get to the town council part of it, we have to read the whole thing. That's the fun part. So would you like to introduce yourself and give us a little synopsis of what's going on here?
Sure. Dean Morrison, Director of Finance. So the town charter allows for supplemental appropriations to the adopted budget, as well as transfers from contingency, in addition to transfers amongst the functions during the last three months of the fiscal year. Any transfers or supplemental appropriations over...
Is that microphone working? Okay.
I'm just not loud.
There you go, better.
Any transfers or supplemental appropriations of 10,000 or more do need to also be approved by the RTM. The information I have listed today is based on the department's review of their estimated budgets for fiscal '24 and what their needs are. So the following are what we are recommending for transfers from contingency. For function 1003 voter registration, we are recommending a transfer of $6,800, and that is to cover personnel expenses related to the new law for early voting. The next one is also for function 1003 voter registration. It's for $15,295, and that is for the purchase of fireproof cabinets, as required by law for their documentation. The cabinetry that they had was not fireproof or waterproof, so in order to be in compliance with laws, that was necessary. The next function is 1011 for information technology for $33,000. Part of that is due to personnel expenses based on the overlap of when the previous manager of IT had left and was receiving some vacation payouts, and the new director had come on board. In addition, there was also some disputed utility expenses. I believe it was related to fiber connections, and they had been ongoing for a few months. The previous manager of IT recommended just paying the bill this year, and just so there was no disruption in the utilities. And then the director of IT, I believe, is going to continue working on that, and potentially we may receive a credit. And the final amount is for function 1070 for insurance and claims. And that is for the increase due to a new legal suit that has come up. So that would be the deductible portion that HR has recommended that we also include in the budget. The total of all of these transfers is $80,095. These transfers are necessary and represent expenditures that were unforeseen or unexpected at the time that the fiscal '24 budget was adopted. The documentation is attached. These transfers will leave a balance of $179,405 in contingency.
Thank you. Council Rusk, would you like to move the motion?
Yes, I make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve FYE 2024 fourth quarter transfers and refer those to the RTM, those over $10,000.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Rusk, and then a second by Pacino.
Ooh, I got one.
Do you have any comments, questions? Council McBride?
I just have a quick general question regarding vacation payouts, because this came up during the budget process. I'm just wondering, what do we do here in terms of vacation payouts? Do we, because, I mean, do we allow people to get six, eight weeks, build up their vacation, then get paid out? I'm just wondering, is there any, or are they encouraged to only max out, you know, five weeks or four weeks?
Depending on, depending on non-union, union, there is an amount, a max amount that individuals can carry over. So if they go above and beyond, it's kind of a use it or lose it.
So there's a maximum for everyone, even if they're unaffiliated or the unions?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Council Board of Line?
What are the legal fees? The two data center lawsuits? Anytime the insurance, if there's a monetary amount asked for, the insurance company, they assign it to their own attorneys, and so that's what's like that case.
Okay, we'll take a vote on this. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Council Parker, I didn't...
It's a aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that passes 8 to 0 to 0. Up next, 5E. Number 2024-249, setting the RTM annual meeting date for FYE 2025 town budget. Council Pacino? I believe that's on page 54.
54, got it.
Motion to recommend a resolution, setting an annual budget meeting for the representative town meeting on Wednesday, May 1, 2024, at 6:30 p.m.
Second. Moved by Pacino, seconded by Rusk. Anybody want to discuss this? Okie joke, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 8 to 0 to 0. Number 5F, 2024-380, approving FYE 2025 budget. Council Parker, would you like to...
Make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the FYE 2025 budget. I still move.
Second. Jones?
Moved by Parker, seconded by Jones.
And I'm going to actually take this, if there's no objection. I was going to give a quick overview first, if that's okay. Just kind of a reminder of the, you know, the path, the original, the current '24 adopted budget is $148,865,140. Coming through the town manager's budget was $158,145,145,094. That would have been an increase of almost 9.3 million or 6.2%. Through the process, the town council has made reductions in over $4.6 million. So very hard work there of making the reductions. Without those, so the current, where it sits now, the council budget for the general fund parts, $153,532,600, which is a 4.6 million increase, 2.9%. Originally, if the town manager budget would have stood, it would have been a 22.13 mill rate right now. It would have been at 24.07, so would have been a 1.94 mill increase. With where we're at right now, the mill rate would be 23.08, assuming 4 million in fund balance use. That's a 0.95 increase, or 4.3%. And then on top of the $153 million and change for the council budget, we have other funds totaling $21,649.08, that things like the golf course, ground sewer district, that type of thing. Altogether, they total $175,000,173,508. And I just wanted to do, kind of as a wrap-up, say I commend the town council for making very tough decisions. It's tough to balance the needs of all of our community, and you did an extraordinary job.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank both of you for all of your help and your assistance throughout this whole process, and you've both been very wonderful through this. Thank you. Council Board of Line?
Oh, thank you. You know, I think it's never fun to go line by line. To me, there are some areas that I think, personally, in my opinion, could have been cut further and to offset other costs. I only can speak for myself. There, you know, with some things said that, you know, might be off or didn't align correctly on certain other line items or budgets. For me, the education line is very important to me. And, you know, I really do feel funding education is vital to all of our runnings of our town. So I, interesting to see what the RTM will do with this. I guess the town manager, if I abstain from this because I just don't like the way that the Board of Ed's being funded, I can do that.
You can do that in any vote.
Yeah. I think at this point I might abstain, only because I am concerned with the not properly funding the education. I do think that there's a lot of work and a lot of effort, and I commend all my counselors for their thoughts, and everyone has their own opinions and feelings on everything, just like the cola we just voted on. You know, it's tough, it really is. And I think, you know, everybody has a desire and a need to, you know, address the need, and it is never easy to be in this position. I also heard some concerns, you know, about Board of Ed's stuff, and I have some similar concerns. But I just don't think it's fair on the backs of the students and education, in my opinion. I think there is ways that the Board of Ed can move the money within the object codes, which we have no control over. But just looking at after the ARPA cuts additionally, on top of that, I do have concerns. I've been reached out by many teachers, paras. So I will abstain from this number because of my concern with not properly funding, in my opinion, the Board of Ed section for me. Thank you. Thank you.
All righty, so I will respond to the approving the FYE 2025 budget. As I stated when we discussed another budget item, I don't know, I can't speak for other counselors, but I will say that every cut that I made on non-Board of Ed items were to give as much as I possibly could to the Board of Ed. There is a balancing act between the education versus our community and how we tax our residents and it is not at all easy to be in this position. I do know that when you increase taxes, it increases people's, the way they can have affordable housing. It increases rents. It increases other areas, including car taxes. So it is not easy to be in this position. I have heard many things, I've had many communications as well. I have heard people that have absolutely supported us. I have also heard people that want more cuts. I have also heard people that think we should give more to the Board of Ed. This is not an easy position to be in for any of us. I think from my own perspective, we did everything we possibly could to give as much as we possibly could to the Board of Ed and also protect the community with taxes and increases with such, after coming off of so much inflation and increases in everything and monetary in everybody's lives. And as was stated here, there are people, 40% of our community has food insecurities and they're struggling to live paycheck to paycheck. So while this is not easy, and it hung on me very heavily, I felt like I made the right decision and now it'll be in the hands of the RTM and we will see what that body does. And, but, we will all move forward and as a community, we will come together no matter how this ends up. So I once again will thank you. I also thank you, Mr. Burt, for sacrificing your increase in pay for our community. I think that is very noble and that you gave up something for yourself for our community. So thank you so much for that.
Second.
Third.
All right, I don't see any more hands, so we'll take a vote. 2024-388, approving FYE 2025 budget.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Opposed.
Passes seven to zero to one. Boarder-Lahn, Boarder-Lahn abstaining. Onto 2024-391, the computation of tax rate for the general fund, FYE 2025. Counselor Gieske, would you like to move that?
Yep. I make a motion to recommend a resolution computing the tentative tax rate for the general fund, FYE 2025, so moved.
Second, Boarder-Lahn.
Move by Gieske, second by Boarder-Lahn. Would you like to give us an overview of this?
Sure, so for the general fund, based on the town council's approved budget, the increase of .95 mils for the general fund brings the mill rate from 22.13 to 23.08 and that's utilizing $4 million of fund balance.
And just to make it clear, this is just setting the tentative amounts. Once the RTM has done with their portion, it'll come back to the council for final.
Thank you. Counselor Boarder-Lahn?
Well, I just want to ask the town manager, is there any way we can use more of that general fund balance?
Yes, we have it running for tonight, but this is just the tentative rate. So once the RTM has done, the council will pick out, will decide how much fund balance to use and set the final mill rate.
Yeah, because I have heard from folks that feel that, you know, back before, I think the rate was like, I don't know, like 11 or some, what was the original? We moved it up to 13 and then we slowly have increased over the years and some people are feeling that it's a tough year and they're asking why we're not using more. I have gotten that. So they were saying, okay, fine, you cut the Board of Ed, but I also want to see more fund balance used. So there are those concerns. So, you know, folks, I know it's been said, we need it for our audits, we need it for this, we need it for our ratings, but moving a little bit more of that money, you know, what is our, you know, yeah, that's my concern, is some people are.
Yeah, and this is just the tentative rate at this level. So once it gets through the RTM and.
We have a chance to move it again. Yeah. Yeah, I think we could be using more personally. So I will abstain from this number as well because I don't feel we're using enough of the general, even tentatively. I'm voting on a number, so even though it's a tentative number, I'm still putting my name on it, I think we could use more tentatively. Thank you.
Would you like me to also discuss the Mumford Cove and Seward District, just increases prior to when the actual resolutions will be read? For the actual, the computation?
Yeah, you can mention that.
Sure. So now for the Mumford Cove, that's going to maintain its mill rate at .28. There's not a lot of fluctuation with that fund. So that's been consistent for the Seward District. There's an increase of .02 mils from .36 to .38 and that was not noted in here, but that was using 100,000 of fund balance.
Thank you. I also have heard from people in our community about the fund balance as well. The council does have a policy regarding the fund balance. If my memory serves me correct, we are at, cannot touch anything below, up to 15%. It is basically sacred money. We have the policy that says we will keep a buffer of up to 18. Anything over 20%, we would, we would review that and consider it for part of the budget. Also, there has been changes where the bond agencies, from what Mr. Burt has relayed to us, the bonding agencies are now requesting that the 15% now go up to 20%.
Yes, we just recently met with the, which one did we do? Standard and Poor's? Yeah, Standard and Poor's. What they say, they want to see at least 20% fund balance and they also don't want to see much shift from year to year. You don't want something to see it drop, you know, let's say, even if you're at 25, they don't want to see something drop to 20.
Okay. So with the 20%, you'd still want a buffer in case there was an emergency, a roof collapses.
A bridge.
A bridge.
On Groton Long Point Road.
Anything. So you want to have a buffer in there of a percentage and that's why we had ours up to 18. And then there was a consideration because also you have to think there could be lawsuits and there could be other things that may affect the fund balance or cash flow. So I understand what the community is saying, but this is also like a reserve that I wouldn't want to deplete, that in the future, we get in a sticky situation where, like you're saying, they're asking us, it may now be at 20. So I would rather not, I would like to use some of it, but I do not like to deplete it because I think this council may also want to look at the policy of our fund balance once again and have an in-depth discussion on that because now the narrative has changed on what the bonding agencies are requiring us to keep.
One other comment I was going to make on that is, as of right now, technically, we are working off of unaudited financial statements. So the fiscal '23 fund balance that would be carried over into '24 and onward, that's not set in stone. I mean, it's what I feel in our general ledger is accurate, but the auditors, they have to finalize their procedures still. So until those audit documents are finalized, that could be changing.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Rusk?
What is our fund balance at right now? Just for clarification.
A percentage?
A percentage?
Oh, a percentage, oh, you know what? If we are to utilize the 4 million, I believe it was going to be.
I could tell you what it was at the last RTM report.
Oh, that's the carryforward for fiscal '23. I guess as of what date are you asking?
If we use, if we do not use this $4 million, what percentage would it be at? And if we do use the $4 million, what would it be at?
I don't have the printout if we did not use the 4 million, but tentatively, where's that word again?
Good with that.
Actually, 23% is what it would be.
23% prior to or after?
After the 4 million.
Okay.
As of, that would be as of June 30, 2024. But that's based on estimates of what our revenues are going to be through the end of this fiscal year and our expenditures are going to be through the end of the fiscal year.
And as of the current balance, we're at 21.2%.
I'm sorry, one more time?
31.6 million, 21.2% as of right now, unaudited.
36 million?
31.6.
31.6 million?
Which is a 21.2%.
21.2%. So if we use $4 million, what percentage are we down to then?
Kind of how this year turns out, really. I think we thought we'd hover around the same 22%ish.
I'm showing 23, but again, these estimates, when I prepared this information.
During the middle of the year.
It was, you know, early estimates from the departments.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gieske?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could, is it, is the 23% rounded or is it like 22.8 something like?
It's 23.4.
23.04 or 23.4?
.4.
Okay, so 23, 4, 0, okay. And a percentage of value is, 1% is equivalent to 1.5 million?
What?
Like a percent, like 1% if, of the, if like 1%.
Oh, 1.5, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Again, unaudited.
Uaudited.
We might have better, since we're into the audit, we might have better knowledge at the end of the RTM process.
And so I guess my question is, how, how is it going to increase from 21.2 where it currently is at to 23.4?
Because I'm taking into account the estimates for fiscal '24, we're projecting.
Extra grant, extra revenues, what might be left in expenditure accounts, trying to guess what it would be.
And what number is that 23.4? Over, like how much, millions of dollars, how much is that?
Oh, so you're saying how much?
Yeah.
From fiscal '24, am I anticipating we would have?
What's the overall number to get that 20, like the, I know the overall budget number?
Yep.
And then what's the number above it that you divide by to get the 23.4%?
Okay, so want me to walk just real quick through the calculation?
Yep.
You would take, actually, I did have the number and I didn't realize it, the 31,624,054 of the unaudited June 30, 2023 fund balance. The estimate for any, either revenues over budget or expenditures under budget adds an additional $8,371,33. So that's bringing me to an unassigned, estimated unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2024 of $39,995,087, minus the $4 million. I love how you're all vigorously writing. If I need to repeat, let me know. So that brings me to an estimated unassigned fund balance, net of the 4 million applied, of $35,995,087.
And then?
And then you would take that number, divided by the fiscal '25 operating appropriations of 153,532,600 to get to the 23.4.
Thank you. That's all from me, Madam Mayor.
We may get a class on that again later. Because you really set the fund balance one time a year, isn't that correct? And you'd estimate the rest of the year, is that correct?
To set the fund balance?
Well, you get the audited number.
Usually by now the audit is done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you, this, you know, that first number is usually solid by now and that's kind of our unknown.
Okay. All right, so the motion to recommend a resolution computing the tentative tax rates for the general fund, FYE 2025. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Counselor Parker, were you an aye?
Yes, sorry, it didn't want to click over.
That's okay, I just want to make sure, thank you. That passes seven to zero to one. All righty, up next. 2024-393, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove District Fund, FYE 2025. Counselor McBride?
Thank you. To recommend a resolution computing the tentative tax rate for Mumford Cove for fiscal 2025 at .28 mils as described by the Finance Director.
Second. Move by McBride, second by Boarder-Lahn. I don't think there's much to discuss here. All right, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes eight to zero to zero. Onto the 2024-392, computation of tax rate for Seward District, FYE 2025. And that would be Counselor Jones.
Motion to recommend a resolution computing the tentative tax rate, 0.38 for the Groton Seward District, FYE 2025, so moved.
Second. Move by Jones, second by Rusk. Okay, I don't see any comments or hands, so we'll take a vote. Computation for the Seward District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes eight to zero to zero. Okay. And.
Motion for a.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Motion adjourned by Parker, seconded by Rusk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. We are now on to the town council's special meeting agenda for 2023, I mean, April 23, 2024. Roll call, all are present except for Counselor Merritt. And we were going to begin with new business. Excuse me?
It's 9:24.
Oh, and this meeting starts at 9:24. Thank you, Counselor Rusk. All right. First up is 2024-249-1, setting RTM annual meeting date. This is now our town council, where we just had discussions in the COW, so now we have to finalize these. Up next is Counselor Rusk, would you like to take that one?
Yes, please. Item 2024-249, setting RTM annual meeting date for FYE 2025 town budget. Resolution setting RTM annual meeting date on the FYE 2025 town budget, whereas Section 9.3. whereas section nine point three point one of the town, Groton Town Charter requires that the town council determine the date for the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting will be held on Wednesday, May first, two thousand twenty four, at six thirty P M at Thrive Fifty Five Plus Active Living Center, one oh two Newtown Road, Groton, Connecticut. I so move.
Second, Bordalan.
Move by Rusk, seconded by Bordalan. I do not see any hands, so we'll take a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Counselor Bordalan? Were you in favor of that one, I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah, I was with her.
You were, okay. Eight to zero.
Setting the date, I have to be correct.
Setting the date, yes.
Nothing wrong there.
All right, on to the next, two zero two four dash three eight eight dash one, approving F Y E two thousand twenty five budget. So let me just ask, does somebody have to read?
Technically, if something's in the packet, you could just mention it. You're not required to read it, as long as it's in the packet in advance.
But it's, so you just read it? Okay, Counselor Pacino?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving budgets for the fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand twenty four and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. Resolved that the budgets for the various funds here and after, set forth, are hereby approved and adopted and the amounts on the total appropriation line are hereby appropriated for the functions specified and the amounts listed under, under the heading Financing Plan are hereby established as approved budget estimates for the type of revenue specified and included, and include, excuse me, all estimated F Y two thousand twenty five cash revenues, except F Y two thousand twenty five current property taxes, which will be estimated for budget purposes by, by separate resolution when the F Y E two thousand twenty five tax rate is set. And further, that the, that a complete detailed document indicating all functions appropriations as hereby made a part of this record and shall be submitted to the town clerk for the public records, record for budgets as follows. The general fund, golf course fund, sewer operating fund, solid waste fund, Mumford Cove Special Taxing District, revaluation fund, recreation and sewer, recreation and senior activities fund, Borrow It, Connecticut, sewer district fund, capital reserve fund, fleet fund, technology replacement fund, human services assistance fund, and the H S assistance fund. I so move.
Second.
Second.
Move by Pacino, seconded by Jones.
Doesn't say that. Yeah.
Don't see any hands, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Passes seven to zero to one.
Can you use a second on that again?
Jones.
That was, yeah, Pacino and Jones. All righty, up next is the two zero two four dash three nine one, dash one, computation of tax rate for general fund, F Y E two thousand twenty five. Counselor Parker, would you like to take that one?
Sure, and if, as long as I can get assistance from Director Morrison on my number.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm going to get stuck on one of them. Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for F Y E two thousand twenty five to pay expenses appropriations approved in the general fund budget as adopted by the town council. Whereas the town council adopted on April twenty third, two thousand twenty four, a general fund budget providing for expenditures appropriations or expenses totaling one hundred fifty three million, five hundred thirty two thousand, six hundred dollars and estimate cash revenues exclusive of F Y E two thousand twenty five, current property taxes totaling forty one million, eight hundred nine thousand, two hundred seventy dollars. Be it resolved that a tax rate of, tax rate of twenty three point zero eight mils is hit by determining as required by chapter nine of the Groton Town Charter, and based on the following computations. Total general fund appropriations per budget approved by council, one hundred fifty three million, five hundred thirty two thousand, six hundred dollars. Less general fund cash receipts of F Y E twenty, two thousand twenty four, current property taxes of forty one million, eight hundred nine thousand, two hundred seventy eight dollars. Less amounts be appropriated from the unassigned fund balance, four million. Amounts to be raised from property taxes, one hundred seven million, seven hundred twenty three thousand, three hundred twenty two. Amount computed as follows, one hundred seven million, seven hundred twenty three thousand, three hundred twenty two, divided by net assessed valuation before Board of Assessment adjustments of.
All right. Is this where you're going to?
Billion, that's all.
Yes, four billion.
How much?
Four billion.
Billion, okay. Hey, look, I have to double check, four billion, seven hundred eighteen million, eight hundred ninety five thousand, four hundred seventy thousand dollars, divided by ninety eight point nine percent collection rate multiplied by one thousand equals twenty three point zero eight mil rate, I so move.
Second, Rusk. Move by Parker, seconded by Rusk. I don't see any hands for discussion, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Passes seven to zero to one. Up next, two zero two four dash three nine three dash one, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove District Fund. Counselor Gajewski?
Yes. A motion to, for resolution computing a tentative tax rate for F Y E two thousand twenty five to pay expenses appropriations approved in the Mumford Cove Special Taxing District Fund budget as, as adopted by the town council. Whereas the town council adopted on April twenty third, two thousand twenty four, a Mumford Cove District Fund budget providing for expenditures appropriations or expenses totaling twenty one thousand, three hundred sixty two dollars and estimate cash revenue exclusive of F Y E two thousand twenty five, current property taxes totaling fifty five dollars. Be it resolved that a tax rate of zero point two eight mils is hereby determined as required by chapter.
Ten.
Ten, of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following.
Nine. Chapter nine.
Chapter nine. Chapter, by chapter nine of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total Mumford Cove District Fund appropriations per budget approved by council, twenty one thousand, three hundred sixty two. Less estimated amount to be appropriated from unassigned fund balance, zero dollars. Less cash receipts exclusive of current property taxes, fifty five dollars. Amounts to be raised from property taxes, twenty one thousand, three hundred seventy dollars. Amount computed as follows. Twenty one thousand, three hundred seven divided by net assessed valuation of seventy six million, seven hundred fifty one thousand and eighty six dollars before the Board of Assessment Adjustments, divided by ninety nine point four percent collection rate multiplied by one thousand equals zero point two eight mil rate, so move.
Second, Bordalan.
Move by Gajewski, seconded by Bordalan. Don't see any hands, so we'll take a vote on this. Computation for tax rate for Mumford's Cove, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. Up next, two zero two four dash three nine two dash one, computation of tax rate for the sewer district, F Y E two thousand twenty five. And the finale for Counselor McBride.
Thank you, I'd like to move item two thousand twenty four dash three nine two, computation of tax rate for sewer district for fiscal year two thousand twenty five. Adopt a resolution computing a tentative tax rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty five to pay expenses perents appropriations approved in the Groton Sewer District Fund budget as adopted by the town council. Whereas the town council adopted on April twenty third, two thousand twenty four, Groton Sewer District Fund budget providing for expenditures appropriations or expenses totaling one million, two hundred eighty three thousand, three hundred twenty two dollars and estimated cash revenue exclusive of fiscal year and two thousand twenty five, current property taxes totaling twelve thousand, nine hundred fifty. Be it resolved that a tax rate of point three eight mils is hereby determined as required by chapter nine of the Groton Town Charter and based upon the following computations. Town Groton Sewer District Fund appropriations per budget approved by council, one million, two hundred eighty three thousand, three hundred twenty two dollars. Less estimated amount to be appropriated from unassigned fund balance, one hundred thousand dollars. Less cash receipts exclusive of current property taxes, twelve thousand, nine fifty. Amount to be raised from property taxes, one million, one hundred seventy thousand, three hundred seventy two. Amount computed as follows. One million, one hundred seventy thousand, three hundred seventy two divided by net asset valuation of three million, three billion, eighty six million, nine hundred thirty six thousand, seven hundred seventy perents before Board of Assessment Adjustments and excludes motor vehicles and perents, divided by ninety nine point seven percent collection rate multiplied by one thousand equals point three eight mils, I so move.
Second, Bordalan.
Second.
Move by McBride, seconded by Bordalan. Don't see any hands, so we'll take a vote on this one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, abstentions? Passes eight to zero to zero.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by, uh, Gajewski.
Second. Oh, wait.
A second.
Seconded by Bordalan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned with eight to zero to zero and it is, I can't even see the time.
Nine thirty six.
Nine thirty six P M. All right.